The security camera footage would later show exactly seventeen seconds of violence. Seventeen seconds that would tear apart a community, topple careers, and force an entire city to confront the poison that had been festering in its institutions for decades. But in those seventeen seconds, all Andre Williams could think about was protecting his ribs from the next blow. The fluorescent lights of Metropolitan General Hospital ' s emergency room buzzed overhead like angry wasps, casting everything in that sickly pale glow that made even healthy people look half- dead. Andre had been sitting in the same orange plastic chair for three hours, his long legs stretched out in front of him, sneakers tapping an anxious rhythm against the scuffed linoleum floor. His sister Maya was somewhere behind those double doors, getting stitches after her bicycle accident, and their mother had trusted him to wait, to be responsible, to be the man of the house at seventeen. The E R was quieter than usual for a Saturday evening. A few families huddled in corners, whispering in Spanish and Mandarin. An elderly man dozed in his wheelchair, his granddaughter reading a worn paperback beside him. The air smelled of disinfectant and fear, the way hospitals always did. But Andre had grown used to it. This was his neighborhood hospital, the place where he ' d been born, where his grandmother had died, where his family had celebrated and grieved for generations. He pulled out his phone to check the time. nine forty seven P M. His A P history essay was due Monday, and he still had two chapters to finish reading. The irony wasn ' t lost on him that he was studying the civil rights movement while sitting in a hospital where, fifty years later, he would soon discover how little had truly changed. You ' ve been here long. The voice cut through his thoughts like a blade. Andre looked up to see a security guard standing over him, arms crossed, badge gleaming under the harsh lights. The man was shorter than Andre, even when standing, with the kind of build that spoke of too many hours at a desk and too many years of accumulated resentment. His name tag read H. Cops in block letters. And his eyes held the cold assessment of someone who had already decided Andre was guilty of something. About three hours, Andre replied, straightening in his chair. My sister ' s getting treated. Hua Cops let his gaze travel slowly over Andre ' s appearance. The designer sneakers his mother had saved for months to buy, the clean jeans, the school polo shirt with the Westfield Academy logo. To Andre, these were the clothes of a student, of someone who belonged. To Hawa Cops, they were evidence of something else entirely. Three hours is a long time to just sit here, Hawa cop said, his voice carrying the weight of suspicion. You sure you got business here? The question hung in the air like smoke. Andre felt his chest tighten, that familiar sensation that came whenever he was reminded that his very existence was somehow suspect. He had felt it in stores when security guards followed him through the aisles, in restaurants when hostesses claimed they were fully booked despite empty tables, in his own neighborhood when police cars slowed down to study his face. I told you, my sister ' s getting stitches, Andre said, keeping his voice level. I ' m waiting for her. Stitches don ' t take three hours. Hawa cop stepped closer, and Andre could smell coffee and cigarettes on his breath. Unless you can ' t prove you belong here, I ' m gonna have to ask you to move along. The conversation was attracting attention now. Other patients were looking over, some with curiosity, others with the uncomfortable recognition of a scene they ' d witnessed before. Andre felt the heat rise in his cheeks, but he forced himself to remain calm. His father had taught him that anger was a luxury he couldn ' t afford, that even justified rage could be twisted into evidence of guilt. I can call my sister if you want, Andre offered, reaching for his phone. She ' s in room. Don ' t reach for anything. Hawa cop snapped, his hand moving instinctively to his radio. Keep your hands where I can see them. The command sent a chill through the waiting room. Conversation stopped. Children looked up from their coloring books. Even the elderly man in the wheelchair opened his eyes, sensing the electricity in the air. I wasn ' t reaching for anything dangerous, Andre said, his voice catching slightly. Just my phone to call my sister. Sure you were. Hawa Cops ' smile was cold, practiced. That ' s what they all say. Look, son, I ' ve been doing this job for fifteen years. I know a loiterer when I see one. You ' ve been sitting here for hours, not talking to anyone, not filling out any paperwork, just watching. That ' s suspicious behavior. Andre felt the word hit him like a physical blow. Suspicious, the catchall term that had been used to justify everything from stop and frisk to murder. He was suspicious for sitting quietly. He would have been suspicious for talking loudly. He was suspicious for being alone. And he would have been suspicious for being with friends. The game was rigged, and everyone in the waiting room knew it. I ' m not loitering, Andre said, standing up slowly, his hands visible at his sides. I ' m waiting for my sister, and I have every right to be here. The phrase every right seemed to trigger something in Hawa cop ' s expression. His jaw tightened, his eyes narrowed, and when he spoke again, his voice carried the edge of someone who had been waiting for this moment all day. Rights, he said, stepping closer until Andre could see the broken capillaries in his nose, the yellowed teeth behind his sneer. You think you got rights. You think you can just sit here taking up space, making people uncomfortable, and then talk to me about rights. I am people, Andre said quietly. I ' m not making anyone uncomfortable. I ' m just waiting. But Hawa Cops was beyond hearing now. Something in Andre ' s quiet dignity, his refusal to be cowed, had flipped a switch that had been installed years ago in places Andre couldn ' t imagine. The security guard ' s face flushed red, and his voice rose to a level that made the fluorescent lights seem to buzz in harmony. You ' re trespassing, he declared, loud enough for the entire waiting room to hear. I am asking you to leave. And if you don ' t comply, I ' ll have you arrested for trespassing and disorderly conduct. The accusation was so absurd that Andre almost laughed. Almost. But the laughter died in his throat when he saw the faces around him, some sympathetic, others carefully neutral, all of them recognizing the script being performed. This wasn ' t about hospital policy or suspicious behavior. This was about power, about who belonged and who didn ' t, about the difference between being seen as a person and being seen as a problem. I ' m not leaving without my sister, Andre said, his voice steady despite the tremor in his hands. She ' s thirteen years old, and I ' m responsible for her. Then you can wait in the parking lot, Hawa cop shot back, or in jail, your choice. The ultimatum hung in the air like a storm cloud. Andre felt the weight of every eye in the room, the silent judgment of strangers who would go home tonight and tell their families about the young man who couldn ' t follow simple instructions. He thought about his mother, working a double shift at the hotel, trusting him to take care of Maya. He thought about his father, who would arrive soon for the city council meeting across the street, expecting to find his children safe and sound. I ' m not going anywhere, Andre said, sitting back down in his chair. I ' m waiting for my sister, and I ' m not breaking any laws. What happened next would be debated in courtrooms and city council chambers for months to come. Hawa Cops would claim that Andre had been aggressive, that he had made threats, that he had reached for something in his pocket. The security camera would tell a different story, a story of a teenager sitting peacefully in a chair, hands in his lap, looking up at a man who had decided that dignity was a crime. The first blow came without warning, a sharp slap that snapped Andre ' s head to the side and sent his glasses skittering across the floor. The sound echoed through the waiting room like a gunshot, and for a moment, everything stopped. Then came the screaming. Oh my God, a woman ' s voice cut through the silence. He ' s just a kid. But Hawa Cops wasn ' t listening. He grabbed Andre by the arm, yanking him out of the chair with enough force to dislocate his shoulder. Andre cried out, more from surprise than pain, and the sound seemed to inflame the security guard further. Stop resisting, Hawa cop shouted, though Andre wasn ' t resisting anything except the urge to fight back. Stop resisting. The phrase was another part of the script, the magical incantation that transformed assault into legitimate force. Andre found himself on the ground, his face pressed against the cold linoleum, his arm twisted behind his back in a position that sent lightning up his spine. He could hear phones being pulled out, cameras clicking, voices raised in protest and fear. Someone call nine one one, an elderly voice called out. This is police brutality. I am security, Hawa Cops bellowed back, his knee pressed into Andre ' s back. I am the authority here. The handcuffs came next, metal biting into Andre ' s wrists with the finality of a prison door slamming shut. He could taste blood in his mouth, could feel the sting of carpet burn on his cheek, but all he could think about was Maya. What would she think when she came out of the treatment room and saw her big brother in handcuffs? What would she tell their mother? Please, Andre whispered, his voice muffled by the floor. My sister. Shut up, Hawa Cops hissed, leaning down so close that Andre could feel his breath on his ear. You brought this on yourself. The waiting room had erupted into chaos. Patients were on their feet, some recording with their phones, others demanding to speak to supervisors. A nurse had emerged from the treatment area, her face pale with shock, and was already on the phone with hospital administration. The elderly man in the wheelchair was calling out to anyone who would listen, his voice shaking with indignation. I saw the whole thing. That boy didn ' t do nothing. He was just sitting there. But Hawa Cops had crossed a line from which there was no return. He hauled Andre to his feet, ignoring the gasps from onlookers as blood dripped from the teenager ' s nose onto his school polo shirt. The sight of it, the bright red against the white fabric, the school logo now stained with evidence of violence, seemed to galvanize the room into action. This is going viral, a young woman announced, holding up her phone. Everyone ' s recording this. The words seemed to penetrate Hawa Cops rage fueled haze. He looked around the room for the first time, really seeing the faces staring back at him, the disgust, the anger, the absolute certainty that they were witnessing something fundamentally wrong. His grip on Andre ' s arm loosened slightly, but it was too late. The damage was done, and the consequences were already in motion. The doors to the treatment area burst open, and Maya Williams stumbled out, her left arm in a sling, her face tear streaked and terrified. She had heard the commotion, had recognized her brother ' s voice, and now she stood frozen in the doorway, staring at the scene before her, with the wide eyed horror of a child who had just learned that the world was far more dangerous than she had imagined. Andre, she whispered, her voice small and broken. What ' s happening? The sight of his sister injured, scared, calling his name broke something inside Andre. All the control he had maintained, all the dignity he had tried to preserve, crumbled in the face of her fear. He struggled against the handcuffs, desperate to reach her, to explain, to somehow make this right. Maya, it ' s okay, he called out, his voice hoarse. I ' m okay. Just stay back. But Maya was already moving, her thirteen year old indignation overriding her fear. She marched up to Hawa Cops, her good arm clenched in a fist, her voice rising with each word. Let go of my brother. He didn ' t do anything wrong. He was waiting for me. Hawa Cops looked down at the girl, his face cycling through confusion, anger, and something that might have been shame. For a moment, the room held its breath, waiting to see if he would compound his crimes by putting his hands on a child. Back off, little girl, he said finally, his voice losing some of its earlier conviction. This doesn ' t concern you. He ' s my brother, Maya shot back, tears streaming down her face. Of course it concerns me. You ' re hurting him. The simple truth of it, spoken by a child who had not yet learned to question her own worth, seemed to ripple through the room like a stone dropped in still water. Andre felt a surge of pride, even through his pain. This was the sister he had been waiting for, the girl who would grow up to be stronger than all of them because she had seen injustice and refused to accept it. It was then that the automatic doors at the front of the emergency room slid open, and Councilman David Williams walked in, still wearing his suit from the city council meeting that had just ended across the street. He was a tall man, with his son ' s same quiet dignity and his daughter ' s fierce protectiveness, and he had come to collect his children before heading home to his wife ' s anxious questions about their evening. The scene that greeted him was every black parent ' s nightmare made manifest his son in handcuffs, his daughter crying, and a security guard standing over them both with the satisfied expression of someone who had just put an uppity family in their place. For a moment, David Williams simply stood there, processing the impossible reality of what he was seeing. Then, his phone was in his hand, and he was live streaming to his official Facebook page, his voice steady but carrying the weight of generations of accumulated pain and rage. This is Councilman David Williams, he said, his eyes never leaving his son ' s face. I am at Metropolitan General Hospital, where my seventeen year old son has just been assaulted and arrested for the crime of waiting for his sister to receive medical treatment. The notification alerts began immediately, likes, shares, comments flooding in from across the city. David Williams had over fifteen thousand followers, built up over years of community organizing and political advocacy, and within minutes, his livestream was being shared by activists, journalists, and ordinary citizens who recognized the significance of what they were seeing. Andre Williams, his father continued, the phone steady in his hand despite the tremor in his voice. Honor roll student at Westfield Academy, volunteer at the food bank, member of the debate team. His crime, sitting quietly in a hospital waiting room while his thirteen year old sister received medical care. Hawa Cops had gone very still, his face pale as he realized who he was dealing with. David Williams wasn ' t just another angry father, he was a public figure, a man with connections and influence, someone who could turn a simple hospital incident into a citywide crisis. Sir, he said, his voice suddenly formal. If you could just If I could just what? David Williams interrupted, his eyes flashing with barely contained fury. If I could just watch quietly while you brutalize my child. If I could just accept that this is normal, that this is how we treat young people in our community. The livestream viewer count was climbing rapidly, five hundred, one thousand, two thousand people watching in real time as a city councilman confronted the institutional racism that had been hiding in plain sight for decades. Comments were flying by faster than anyone could read them, a mix of outrage, support, and the inevitable trolls who would defend anything if it meant maintaining the status quo. Take those handcuffs off my son, David Williams said, his voice carrying the authority of someone who had spent years learning how to command respect in rooms full of people who would rather ignore him. Now, Hawa Cops looked around the room desperately, searching for backup that wasn ' t coming. The nurse was on the phone with hospital administration. The patients were recording everything, and even the elderly man in the wheelchair was nodding approvingly at the councilman ' s words. I can ' t do that, Hawa cop said, but his voice lacked conviction. He was trespassing, being disorderly. He was sitting in a chair, David Williams said, his voice rising slightly. Waiting for his sister, the same thing any parent would expect their child to do, the same thing you would expect your child to do. The personal nature of the comparison seemed to strike home. Hawa Cops ' s face flushed red, and his grip on Andre ' s arm tightened reflexively, causing the teenager to wince in pain. The reaction was caught on camera, shared instantly with thousands of viewers who were now seeing the casual cruelty that had been invisible to them minutes before. You ' re hurting him, Maya said, her voice small but clear. Please stop hurting my brother. It was the plea that broke through the remaining walls of justification and denial. David Williams stopped recording and stepped forward, his presence filling the space between his children and the man who had attacked them. This ends now, he said quietly, but his voice carried the weight of absolute certainty. You have two choices. You can uncuff my son and walk away, or you can explain to the mayor, the police commissioner, and the hospital board why you thought it was appropriate to assault a minor in front of fifty witnesses. The bluff worked, because it wasn ' t really a bluff. David Williams had the phone numbers he needed, the relationships he had built over years of public service, and the moral authority that came from being absolutely unquestionably right. Ho Cops fumbled for his keys, his hands shaking as he unlocked the handcuffs. Andre ' s arms dropped to his sides, circulation returning in painful waves. His father was beside him instantly, checking his injuries, while Maya threw her good arm around his waist and held on tight. Are you okay? David Williams asked, his voice gentle now, all the public anger replaced by private concern. Do you need medical attention? Andre shook his head, not trusting his voice. His wrists were raw from the handcuffs, his nose was still bleeding, and his shoulder felt like it had been pulled out of socket. But he was alive. He was with his family. He was safe. But the story was far from over. The livestream had been shared hundreds of times, the hashtag, Andre Williams was trending locally, and local news stations were already dispatching crews to the hospital. What had started as a simple case of racial profiling had become a symbol of everything that was wrong with the systems that were supposed to protect and serve. By the time the family left the hospital, protesters had gathered outside. Not many, perhaps thirty people, but enough to make their presence known. They carried signs hastily made from cardboard and markers. Justice for Andre. Stop hospital racism. Children are not criminals. The crowd was diverse, young and old, black and white and everything in between, united by the simple understanding that what they had witnessed was wrong. David Williams addressed them briefly, his children beside him, his voice carrying the weight of exhaustion and determination in equal measure. Tonight, my son was attacked for the crime of existing while black, he said, his words carrying across the parking lot and into the phones that would spread them across the city. But tonight, you also proved that we don ' t have to accept injustice. We don ' t have to be silent. We don ' t have to pretend that this is normal. The crowd responded with applause and cheers. But David Williams wasn ' t finished. He looked directly into the cameras, knowing that his words would be quoted in newspapers and shared on social media, that they would become part of the permanent record of this moment. Hawa Cops made a choice tonight. He chose to see a threat where there was none. He chose to use violence where there was peace. He chose to abuse his power rather than serve his community. Those were his choices. And now, he must face the consequences. The consequences came swiftly. By morning, the video had been shared thousands of times, picked up by national news outlets, and analyzed by legal experts, who confirmed what everyone already knew, that Andre Williams had been the victim of clear- cut assault and racial profiling. The hospital ' s board of directors called an emergency meeting. The mayor issued a statement promising a full investigation, and the police department announced that they would be reviewing the case for potential criminal charges. Hawa Cops was suspended pending investigation, his fifteen- year career in security effectively over. The hospital implemented new policies requiring de- escalation training for all security personnel, and David Williams used his position on the city council to propose legislation that would require body cameras for all hospital security guards. But the most powerful changes were the ones that couldn ' t be measured in policy papers or news reports. Andre Williams returned to school the following Monday to find his classmates wearing Josh Andre Williams T- shirts, his teachers offering support, and his guidance counselor suggesting that he might have a future in civil rights law. Maya Williams started a diversity club at her middle school, channeling her anger into action in the way that only teenagers can. And David Williams found himself at the center of a movement that extended far beyond his son ' s case. Other families came forward with their own stories of hospital discrimination, of being treated like threats rather than patients, of having their children criminalized for breathing while black. The pattern was clear, the evidence overwhelming, and the community ' s response was swift and decisive. Six months later, Metropolitan General Hospital hosted its first annual Healing Justice conference, bringing together medical professionals, community leaders, and families who had been affected by health care discrimination. Andre Williams was the keynote speaker, his voice steady and strong as he addressed an audience that included many of the same people who had witnessed his assault. That night in the emergency room, he said, his mother and father and sister in the front row. I learned that dignity is not something that can be taken away from you. It ' s something you carry inside yourself, something that no one can touch, no matter how hard they try. He looked out at the faces in the audience, medical students and nurses, security guards and administrators, community members and activists, and saw the possibility of real change reflected in their eyes. But I also learned that dignity without justice is just suffering in silence. That ' s why we ' re here today, not to forget what happened, but to make sure it never happens again. The applause was thunderous, but Andre Williams barely heard it. He was thinking about that night in the hospital, about the seventeen seconds that had changed everything, about the choice between silence and speaking truth to power. He was thinking about his sister, who had faced down a grown man to defend her brother, and his father, who had turned private pain into public action. Most of all, he was thinking about the future, about the children who would grow up in a world where their dignity was protected, where their presence was welcomed, where they could sit in a hospital waiting room without fear. It was a future worth fighting for, worth the pain and the struggle and the long road ahead. As the conference ended and people began to file out, Andre Williams stood at the podium for a moment longer, looking out at the emptying auditorium. The security guard who had attacked him was long gone, his career and reputation destroyed by his own choices. But the work of healing, of justice, of creating a better world that work would continue long after the cameras stopped rolling and the headlines faded. Because that ' s what justice looks like in the end, not a single moment of triumph, but a lifetime of choosing to do better, to be better, to create a world where every child can sit in a hospital waiting room and just be a child, worried about their homework and their family and their future, without having to carry the weight of other people ' s fears and prejudices. Andre Williams walked down from the podium. Andre Williams walked down from the podium, his family waiting for him, his community standing with him, and his future stretching out before him like a road leading toward dawn. The work was far from over, but tonight, it was enough to know that seventeen seconds of violence had been transformed into a lifetime of hope. The emergency room at Metropolitan General Hospital looked different now. The same fluorescent lights buzzed overhead, the same orange plastic chairs sat in neat rows, but something fundamental had shifted. New posters hung on the walls, depicting patients of all colors and backgrounds, with messages about respect and dignity in multiple languages. The security desk displayed a prominent sign outlining patient rights and the hospital ' s commitment to equal treatment. Most importantly, the security guards who walked the halls had been retrained, their approach fundamentally altered by the knowledge that the world was watching, that their actions had consequences, and that every patient deserved to be treated with the basic human dignity that should never have been in question. The revolution had begun with seventeen seconds of violence, but it would be measured in generations of children who grew up knowing that they belonged, that they mattered, that their presence in the world was a gift rather than a threat. That was the real victory, not the punishment of one man, but the transformation of a system, the healing of a community, and the promise of a future where justice was not just a dream, but a lived reality for all.